Candidates form for the upcoming election. There are four candidates in the race and I believe the PTA had reached out to Scott Majors and he is not here. So we leave this with Mr. Brady, who is the incumbent on the board, Mr. Hollenbach, and then Mr. Sexton. So we will just go ahead and get started and I am going to jump in right away with the budgets and ask each of you, I don't have to explain to you, you've got two minutes to respond to the question. If you'd like to do a rebuttal, you have about a minute, just kind of let me know if you want to rebut something that somebody said. Let's go ahead and talk about the budget and a potential tax increase to support schools. Do you think that that is something that you would support? And I'll start with you, Mr. Sexton.
Thank you. Thanks for the invitation to be here. One point four billion dollar budget. Large. I don't know exactly what's coming down the road for increases or requests or proposals, but I promise you I will vote no on any tax increase presented to the board by a member of the board. There are many, many fixed income families. There are many families who are worried about the potential nickel tax for construction. One point four billion should be enough.
Okay. Mr. Brady, why don't you go next?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say I appreciate the PTA for allowing us to have this opportunity to have this forum. It's always great to be able to, you know, have the opportunity to talk about the issues. Regarding the potential tax increase, if the administration were to make the case that a tax increase was needed, then I would certainly consider it. You know, you have to take a look at what's going on within our schools and what types of needs might, you know, might need to be addressed. For me, over the last four years that I've been on the board, I've raised taxes one time and twice I didn't raise taxes at all. And because last time I actually lowered the tax. So I think over the course of my time on the board, I think I've raised taxes only one point four percent rather than four percent every single year. In addition to that, one of the things that we need to understand and, you know, look at when we talk about budgets is that over the last eight years since 2008, the state has not given JCPS any really additional funds. In fact, in many ways, it actually increased our cost. They've actually handed down some funded mandates. So those are things that we always have to take into consideration. They've stripped funding for textbooks, they've stripped funding for family resourcing services centers. So those are gaps that the district has been able to backfill with our budget. Now, you might hear that it's one point four billion dollars and that is a large budget, but when you consider the fact that we educate over 101,000 students every day, then you have to understand that you need to compare us to a like-sized school district, not the city or the state budget, but a like-sized school district. And when you do that, you're going to find out that our budget is right in line with other school districts of our size. We're not the lowest, we're not the highest, but we're pretty much stacked out in the middle. So that's something that, you know, I think all of us need to understand when we're talking about budgets and make sure we're comparing apples to apples and not apples to crabs.
Just real quick, Mr. Hollenbach, where you start. Just make sure when you guys speak, speak into the microphone because we want to make sure the back of the room can hear and I can relate to that, exactly what that's like. Mr. Hollenbach, what's your thought on the budget and potentially raising taxes?
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to the forum tonight. Before I begin, I don't know if people appreciate the fact that the PTA is the largest child advocacy group in the United States. If you think about what the PTA does, it's amazing. So my compliments for the forum and I appreciate the opportunity. So here is the budget. That's it. Hundred thirty pages. Lot of information in there. And if you've ever spent time going through a budget, which I have, you know that it is chock full of information that tells you where the money's going. So when I think about taxes and the approach to taxes and as Mr. Brady said, the need for taxes, I think that there is money available here to allocate towards where we need to allocate it. So we need to move the money to solve problems. And I would take issue with Mr. Brady saying just lower the taxes. I think a better way to look at it is property values have gone up and so because they went up, the school lowered the rate so that they didn't have to vote on taxes. Now, because of that, there was a fourteen million dollar increase in the budget this year, much of that went to teacher salaries, which I'm glad they had the money to do that. But just last night, the board decided to increase for the tune of about three million dollars the cost because of the busing issue. You know, that's a legitimate issue. But I didn't hear anything from Mr. Brady about the cost last night when the public was listening, not one word. And we need a board member who says when people want to bring up cost, what's that going to cost us? Three million dollars is a lot of money. Where's that going to come from?
As a newly elected board member, what steps would you take to restore the public's confidence in our public school system? And Mr. Brady, I'll start with you.
Is this one on?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm not a newly elected member. So what we've been trying to do is through the superintendent's evaluation, push our superintendent to collaborate more with our teachers and with our students, our mass students, both our community and build relationships and business partnerships with our community. We've done that. Our foundation is actively going out and looking at building those partnerships and being able to bring more funds into the foundation, which in turn, we as a board will approve to help fund student initiatives. One of the other things that we are trying to do is, you know, provide more counselors within our schools to be able to deal with some of the trauma that our students are dealing with and that creates a better environment for our teachers to work in. So things like that are some of the things that we're doing as a board and myself included on that as well. I do want to go back and touch upon the issue where you talked, where my opponent talked about the busing issue from yesterday, where I didn't talk about that. I did speak about that and we're facing an issue right now where we're having to cancel bus routes. Part of that is that we have a legal obligation as a board to be able to provide transportation. So we have to be able to provide those drivers for those routes. One of the things I asked about is, is this enough funding to be able to do that? Because we are in a transportation and distribution heavy county. We have to, for drivers, for CDL driver license drivers, they compete against GPS. We have to compete against other school districts around here. We've got to also compete against a number of different overnight colleges. So one of the things I did ask about was whether or not we are actually providing enough funds to look at that. Now, I don't want to have to spend another three point one million dollars for bus drivers if I don't have to, but we have to get kids to school. And my first focus is on kids. That's the first priority. And if we're not fulfilling our priority and our obligation to kids, then everything else related to comes up. And second, I don't know what our priorities would be.
Mr. Sexton, what steps would you take to restore the public's confidence in our public school system?
I'd reinstitute the neighborhood schools, allowing a parent and a student to make a decision to go to their neighborhood school if they wish. If they wish to apply for a magnet school, that would be okay. But guaranteed seats are important in schools and parents need to know that school is going to be safe and that they will be going there and they don't have to wait until August to get their assignment. It's important, I think, to have police and medical help assistance on staff in our buildings. I don't know what better thing you can do for a parent or a student than to have police and medical professionals in buildings to help them get through the school day.
Mr. Hollenbach?
Would you repeat the question?
Yes. As a newly elected or in Mr. Brady's case, reelected board member, what steps would you take to restore the public's confidence in our public school system?
Well, if you listen to what parents say on the surveys that schools send out, there are a lot of parents who have a level of confidence in schools. It's not where it needs to be, but it certainly is better than some of the dire predictions. Having said that, if we look at some of the issues that have confronted our schools with the under-recording that was done on the board's watch, it's kind of shocking. It causes people not to have confidence in our system. When you see a case where a youngster gets both of his legs broken and two years later the board settles the case for one point seven billion dollars. For one point seven billion dollars, million dollars, excuse me, one point seven billion dollars, that's cause for concern because those parents out there think, that could be my job. So that undermines credibility. As far as Dr. Hargens, I think Dr. Hargens is a skilled professional. What I hear is much what Chris talked about earlier, is that the capacity to engage the workforce has been lacking. And you see that with both the surveys and within the unrest, I guess you would say, of the workforce. So I think a greater outreach to them, more opportunity to spend time within our school community, and I think a heightened level of transparency. And by that, I mean a greater explanation to the degree possible of what it is that is occurring that should allow our school students to have more confidence in what's going on.
How would you rate the superintendent's performance thus far? Would you renew her contract if it were up for renewal today? And Mr. Hollenbach, I don't want me to go right back to you, but I want to kind of rotate who gets, what questions first. So I'll reiterate. How would you rate the superintendent's performance thus far? Would you renew her contract if it were up for renewal today?
So the board does the review and I think that was in June. And while they don't give what the rating was, I would call it a needs improvement. And by needs improvement, they cited specifically what they call taking people with you. And that to me was saying that the superintendent needs to do a much better job of explaining herself and explaining herself within the context of the six thousand plus teachers and the 10,000 or so support staff. I believe the board vote on the superintendent's contract, I'm sorry, on their evaluation was six to one. I think there's a case to be made to ask confidentially, and you wouldn't need to do this necessarily now, but certainly by the beginning of the year, ask the superintendent for future steps because it's only two years away, and then to start a search for a new superintendent. We have the 28th largest school district in the United States. The pool of people that can do this job is relatively narrow. And it's not unreasonable, having done searches for high-level folks before, to think that you're going to need a year plus to do that search. And my sense is that the superintendent is looking at this as her last, her last year or so contract, and so she would be very open to the idea of helping us look and search for that candidate. So overall, needs improvement, and I think now is the time for us to make that decision. And the new board certainly needs to do that sooner as opposed to later.
Mr. Sexton, how do you, what's your view on that? How do you rate her performance thus far? Would you renew her contract?
I worked for, I would say I'm the only one that works. I've worked for seven different superintendents. I have forty-six years in education, way more than these fellows. None of the top-down superintendents that I worked for had successful districts. Our superintendent now is a top-down administrator.
Would you move to renew her contract?
Our superintendent is a top-down administrator.
What do you mean by top-down?
Not many decisions are made at the local school. The SPDNs are supposed to be making great decisions. The principals are supposed to be carrying out the wishes of the community. That's not happening.
What characteristics would you look for in a replacement superintendent?
Someone that lets the principals be principals.
Mr. Hollenbach?
So when I think of capable executives, and that's what this job is, leaders, I think of a number of attributes. First and foremost, and I think it needs to have someone who has high personal energy, the capacity to energize others. And by that, I mean the capacity to get people rowing their oars in the same direction that you are. And the way to measure that is to look behind you and when you say we're headed this way, look around and if you see people following you, you're probably a leader. If they aren't, you're in trouble. So personal energy, ability to energize others, and then what I call edge with style. And you might be agree with the term edgy. Well, I think of an edge with style as confronting issues in a professional way. And by that, I mean we don't shy away from taking a tough vote. We don't shy away from discussing a tough issue. We hit it, we hit it straight on and we address it in a way that the public understands. The last E was excellent.
Mr. Brady, going back to the initial question, which was, how would you rate the superintendent's performance thus far and would you renew her contract if it were up for renewal today?
Well, the term, the process of evaluating the superintendent happens pretty much every June and one of the things that happens is that all seven board members come together to discuss this. And once we discuss this, we'll, we'll, we come up with performance objectives and then we decide, you know, how to best, you know, give feedback to the superintendent. You have to understand that I and any person that sits in this seat, there's only one voice of seven. So, you know, for me to be able to say, I would renew or not renew the superintendent's contract, especially at this time considering it's not during the evaluation, it would be, really be a bit of, I would not be doing my job to do the best of my ability if I were to do that. I am not going to evaluate the superintendent within a forum like this. It's something that all, what happens is that we talk with our colleagues and also we have to give our superintendent a chance to present her evidences to be able to say, this is what I've done to be able to meet the objectives that the board has outlined and see whether or not you've met those objectives. You know, are there concerns that I have? Certainly there are. You know, the data integrity issue that was brought up a little bit earlier, that is certainly an issue. That's one of the reasons why I called for our external audit groups to be able to do an audit of our data. You know, if we're going to be a data-driven district, we need to make sure we have data integrity to be able to make firm and good decisions on. So, and when we're looking at leaders in this district, you know, the, to say that Dr. Hargens, Hargens doesn't have energy, I think would be a way not to really pay attention to what she's done. It is not abnormal for me to get a text from Dr. Hargens on Sunday evening or on Saturdays. I know that, I see her schedule every week and I know that she is out in the community. Now, are there areas for improvement? Certainly there are and I avoid those concerns within the superintendent's evaluation. But I'll let that superintendent, that evaluation speak for itself and give Dr. Hargens a chance to be able to respond.
Let's shift a little bit because in your particular race, we have seen some advertisements from different external funding from, for ads outside your own campaign fund. If you do receive, if your campaign has received external funding, what is your connection to the group that funded those ads and why do they support you and what do you expect from them in return? And I know Chris Brady, you have picked up an endorsement and there's been some advertisements in you as well, Mr. Hollenbach. I don't think I've seen any from Mr. Sexton, so maybe just be a directed question for the two of you. Mr. Hollenbach, you can start. I think it's, go ahead.
Before I begin, I want to step back for a second because Mr. Brady said he didn't feel comfortable talking about Dr. Hargens if I was in the same. But that's exactly what happened in June. You gave a synopsis of it. It was in the newspaper, all the elements were there. And I did not say she did not have energy. That's a mischaracterization of what I said. I said the superintendent, in the future, one of the attributes needed to be a high level of energy. That's no disparaging words to Dr. Hargens. And the question about advertising, well, you know, there's money in politics, right? And while this is a nonpartisan race, this is the most political nonpartisan race in the whole community. So I don't control what people say about me or what they said about me and I hope it's accurate, right? I really hope it's accurate. I actually spent more time with courting the Better Schools Kentucky group than any other group in the community. I reached out to them. They were very nice to listen to me, to, to listen to me a number of times. I pestered them, you might say. I talked to their president, I talked to the political director, I talked to the vice president. I had a meeting with them, I had a meeting within the committee, but they chose not to represent me, which was discouraging because I had nine years of teaching experience. I was an assistant principal. I spent twenty years as a senior VP of a three point five billion dollar public company. I sat in a board of directors meeting. I understand how a board is supposed to work in government. And I would take one other thing, Christine. Your information, Mr. Brady, says you were the only candidate with actual teaching experience. And I asked Jim tonight, I said, I don't think that's accurate because I think you've got fifty-plus years in education and I've got thirteen, so please correct that.
Sure, be happy to. So I'm the only candidate with actual teaching experience. I'm also, there's other two, there's two other points there, the only candidate that has children currently in JCPS and I'm also the only candidate with board experience. Those are the three older points that are on the front of that card and for him to say, oh, you're just the only candidate. Either you're not reading the rest of the card or you're trying to not really talk about the issue. But, and that's actually kind of what's going on here because we're not talking about the fact that I am endorsed by the majority of the employees that make up this district. These are women and men that teach our kids every day, they care for our children, they're on the front lines. And I am honored to have their endorsement. What he's not talking about is the fact that he got endorsed by a group that's pretty much representative of about five to seven multimillionaires. There are over, I don't know, 10,000 employees that are supporting my campaign or seven multimillionaires that wouldn't even send their kids to our schools. You decide who's endorsement actually needs more.
Mr. Hollenbach, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah. The endorsement that there matters will be on November the eighth. That's the only endorsement that matters. And that endorsement is by the district voters of District Seven. And having spent the last six months canvassing that district, I can tell you they're not happy with the direction of their current incumbent. That's why I feel very confident that that vote on the eighth of November will be the vote that matters. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity to be the voice not just of JCPS, not just of JCTA, and not just of all the interest groups, but of those hard-working parents who every day want to see their kids get a good education and education they can be proud of. And from all those citizens out there who don't have kids at school, but see that tax bill every year and they wonder what that fourteen hundred dollars or two thousand dollars is going to. That's the vote that will matter on November eighth.
Mr. Sexton, I'd just like you to obviously have a chance to jump in here.
I'm just laying back here, the rocks are flying and I don't want to get hit.
I would like to ask just a little bit though, I mean, in terms of unions, because we are bringing up unions and JCPS is, has a lot of unions that represent, Abby's the former administrator, you're aware of that?
I'm aware of it. I'm self-funded.
Right, no, I understand that.
Self-funded.
I understand that, but there are a lot of unions within the district.
I'm endorsed by the American Family Association.
What are your thoughts and what are your views of the unions within JCPS and are they important?
Unions are good. You have to belong to something and I think it's good that our teachers have someone to speak for them. I think that we could allocate more money to the classroom if we maybe move some of the positions around that are helping teachers teach. Teachers don't need that much help.
What are your priorities for the district in this coming year? If you were appointed or elected to this board?
I'd like to see local schools reinstituted. I'd like to see police and medical assistance, medical help in our buildings. We're just lucky that nothing serious has happened medically and we're lucky that nothing real serious has happened without police protection in these small cities. I'd like to see the neighborhood school concept be placed back into action for parents and students to decide that they can go to their neighborhood school if they wish. And I'll always vote no on tax increases.
Just to side-stump a little bit on the neighborhood schools issue, we have schools in Jefferson County that are underpopulated and overpopulated and there's also a school system of choice. So when you say neighborhood schools, I'm curious to know what exactly you mean by that because the way the district is, is made up, there may not be enough room at one school and there may be too much room at another school. So how would you work that?
I can understand that. I've been a principal where I was allocated for eighteen hundred and fifty students and I had twenty-two hundred and fifty. You can take the students that are in your neighborhood if you want to take the students that are in your neighborhood. Your teachers can accommodate it and your budget can accommodate it. I have been there. I have run a budget. I have run three large schools. I know what I'm talking about. We don't need all the help we have administratively. We don't need all the help we have for teachers. We need to lower the seat count. Teachers do not need all this help with curriculum writing. We have too many people helping teachers teach. They're good, they're professional. Let them teach. Let them run their classroom.
Mr. Hollenbach, what would your priorities for the district be in the coming year?
Let me touch base on something when we talk about unions. In 1975, I walked the picket line with the teachers. That was an interesting experience because it gave me a sense of what goes on when you have to fight for your rights. So I understand the need for representation and I would welcome the opportunity to have a little dialogue. I think obviously safety of our students is the primary concern and I welcome, Mr. Brady was at the guns and metal detectors meeting last Thursday, I believe it was, at the show in, I'm not sure, Chester Street, YCA. That needs to be looked into. I think there's more information needs to come forth, but it's a, it's a good start to have some dialogue about the appropriateness of that. As far as priorities, I want to reference again, the one point four billion dollar budget. You know, if you just do a quick back-of-the-inkled calculation, a hundred thousand students, one point four million, that's fourteen thousand dollars per student. Now, I would suggest to you that an evaluation of this budget would show tens of millions of dollars that could be reallocated slightly in a different way than Mr. Sexton talked about.
Hey, no total rock here.
No. In a way that we would allocate more money towards the direct need in a classroom. That would, that would pay for a lot of teacher salary. And secondly, I think the achievement gap. While we've made some improvements, the fact of the matter is when you dig into those numbers, what's really happening is we have some students who are getting much better and some that are falling behind more. That's why in my platform, I talked about the literacy guarantee in third grade. We need to address reading early in a child's life.
Mr. Brady, what would your priorities be for the district in the coming year?
Well, first of all, increase student achievement because it's always about student achievements and we need to make sure that we're a student-focused. I agree that we should have safe schools, but that to me is kind of a base level thing. It's kind of like saying, well, what's your plans for the future? What's your priorities? Vote really. That's kind of a base level thing. But outside of the base level issues like that, you know, we have to make sure we continue to grow our college and career readiness. We have to continue to increase our graduation rate, which by the way, when I came onto the board, it was at sixty-eight percent. We're at now at eighty percent. That's a significant improvement. I mean, close the achievement gap. So that's something that we're making gains on having overall improvement, but we're not really, we're plateaued on that. So we're not really closing the gap as fast as we would like. So certainly, I am asking us to have the status quo and you shouldn't either and we're going to focus funds to be able to close that gap. In addition to that, we're going to, I want to improve facilities and infrastructure. And we're going to map through the work group that I chaired that was part of Vision 2020 where we focused on technology and performance improvement. And because of that, now we have an infrastructure, facilities plan and we're going to be developing a plan to be able to improve our infrastructure here within the district as we have over one billion dollars in funding needed. We also need to properly fund our schools and as well as Vision 2020, which is our strategic plan. Our strategic plan is what informs our decisions, is how we're going to move the need, also going to support all these other priorities that I'm discussing. In addition to that, we need to better provide resources for teachers and students. That includes more counselors to be able to deal with some of our students that are experiencing trauma on a daily basis. And I would also want to support the Say Yes to Education initiative, which if fully enacted, will provide college tuition for any JCPS graduate that is academically qualified. So those are my top priorities and, and I think that the dialogue should be everyone's, no matter who's in this seat. So those are my top priorities and I think that the debate should be everyone's, no matter who's in this seat.
The next question I have, actually, we'll go to the one I've gotten from the audience since we're on the topic of achievement. What do you think the problems are that lead to low achievement? And how do you propose they be fixed? Mr. Sexton, talk a little bit about achievement.
Achievement really comes with the rigor in the classroom and classroom teacher. We've accepted a lower level of achievement in many of our schools because it's just accepted, it's okay. We have too many lower track coursework. I'm thinking mostly secondary school, elementary is a little bit different. But in high school where you get credits to graduate, eighty percent of our students are graduating. I hear Mr. Brady say. But only twenty percent of them are ready to go to the next level of academic study, which might be junior college or college. They're just not ready because they have not had any courses that had any rigor in them. They've not had any advanced placement programs. Many of them have never really been challenged academically. They've just been accepted that they are making good grades in a lower track coursework. You have to eliminate the lower tracks. You have to push students to another level. You have to let your teachers teach. Close the door, let the teacher be in charge of the classroom, they're all very good. And quit giving them so much help.
Mr. Hollenbeck, how would you, what do you, in terms of achievement, how do you propose, what are the issues that lead to low achievement and how do you propose they be fixed?
Obviously, youngsters come to school with all different situations. And I think we have to recognize that there are some very difficult and challenging situations with a number of our youth. And those, quite frankly, are very, very difficult, very difficult. Having said that, an engaged principal with a ready and engaged work team, i.e. teachers, is the single most important element for school success. And that principal, who is indeed a person who engages both with students, teachers, and the entire team, along with setting high expectations. It's my belief that high expectations lead to higher results. In psychology and sociology, they call it the self-fulfilling expectation. And young people want parameters and want to be understood. A great example of that is a principal at our school in J-Town. Mr. Polio just recently highlighted in a news article, at DOS. He talked about expectations and engagement and some of the quotes from the students where they can't believe what a difference that is. And you'll see that in the test force, you'll see a remarkable change in the test force. Now, having said that, what happened in that situation was Mr. Polio, three days before the beginning of school last year, was either told or decided to leave J-Town and had left J-Town in the works. And that's where I think a school board member has an obligation to say, time out superintendent, we're making this change, can we wait a little bit before we send somebody off to a new, a new location with no backup? And that backup is where we really need to have greater bench strength. We need to have a much more robust teaching and training opportunity for our principals so we can not have that situation.
Mr. Brady?
Let me carry on with that particular thought thread just for a moment, just to clarify. Marty Polio, former principal of J-Town, took over at DOS during, in July. He got off of that, that job in July and pretty much had his, you know, his teaching, his teachers in place by the time he went live or went with the first day of school. Now, however, J-Town High School itself, though, did get their principal like the day before, about within hours before actually the start of school, that was Ellie Mackensley. And I can assure you, I did talk about that quite a lot. That was unacceptable and it's certainly something that we, that this district administration should and will do better in the future. Now, regarding the issues of achievement, you know, first of all, poverty. First and foremost, if we could fix poverty, we could probably fix the majority, vast majority of issues that go on in our schools. You know, poverty is in the way of so many things. However, no one, school board member or school district can solve poverty. It's going to take all of us working together to be able to deal with that because that is a multifaceted problem, it's going to deal, it's going to need a multifaceted solution. In addition to that, you know, we, you know, I heard twenty percent of folks are college and career ready. Actually, it's around seventy-six percent. I'm certainly not happy with that, we need to have one hundred percent that's college and career ready. We're moving the needle and we're improving that. We have a lot of dual credit programs right now, even despite the fact that the state kind of changed the guidelines. But the dual district is providing more funds to be able to deal with that issue and that deficit. We also need to have deeper learning, this is called out within our Vision Twenty Twenty plan. Deeper learning, it also deals with individualized learning. And it's important to understand that you have students that don't learn at the same rate because not everyone's the same. So we have to make sure that we have individualized learning that's targeting the individual and not just trying to fit them into a, you know, a cog, into a peg, or peg circle. We also have principal development. Marty is a prime example that, Marty is doing fantastic things over at DOS. And you can check out, I guess, our meeting yesterday when he talked about that. So fantastic things, we're happy to have Marty there.
Talk a little bit, let's get away from achievement a little bit and talk about the student behavior and discipline issue because I know certainly I've written and covered a lot about discipline and student behavior in the last two years or so. The instant numbers have gone up. You know, where, what are your thoughts on discipline in the classroom? And this issue with student behavior that is leading to people leaving the profession, whether as a bus driver, a teacher, instructional assistant? Where are you on that issue? And we'll start with you, Mr. Hollenbeck.
Well, first, I think many people in this audience probably are familiar with the disparity and the reporting that happened last year. And it occurred to me that not only does that undermine the confidence in the community, but it does a disservice to our schools. And when the news came out about that and it was a report that talked about a code of silence, and we had some security officers who say that they had to check into the fact that there were no reported incidents at the school when there were clearly dozens. You scratch your head and you're saying, what's going on? That is not healthy, it's not good for anybody. The code of conduct, the change that was made this last year, I think was a healthy one. It talked about being very specific as opposed to just a general disruption. And I think that's very helpful because, you know, there's a big difference between a student who bows off and calls a teacher "M." And a teacher who, and a student who, you know, says something out of turn or maybe it's a little bit disrespectful. I think what's challenging from a teaching standpoint is when you see that student right back in the classroom and there's not equal justice for those who commit violations of the code. You know, goals begin behavior and consequences maintain them. And when there are no consequences for poor behavior, then we're doing a disservice to those youngsters. Because the heart of discipline is to teach and train someone what to do right. And when we think of discipline not as punishment, but as a way to teach and train people, then it changes their perspective.
Mr. Sexton?
Well, you happen to ask an area that I've had a lot of experience with. Everyone thinks the teacher of the classroom should be the disciplinarian. And that's where we make a huge mistake. You have to have an understanding with the student body that if they disrupt the classroom, then they must leave immediately. When the teacher says leave, there are other students who want what the teacher says they give. The teacher cannot take time to discipline, argue, jerk people around, threaten. The teachers are to teach and maintain the classroom. If the student doesn't leave, of course, you're going to have to get help. But you have to have an understanding with the student body. They have a bad day, something goes wrong, and they disrupt the classroom, the teacher just should say, out. And the student has to leave and take the consequences with the disciplinarians of the building, which are the principal, assistant principals, not the teacher. The teacher doesn't have time for all of this. The teacher's in charge of the curriculum, in charge of teaching, let them teach.
Mr. Brady?
The code of conduct, when it came forward earlier this year, was certainly not where it needed to be. And myself, as well as my colleagues, really spoke very, or very outspoken on the fact that that code of conduct, how it was presented to us, needed to change. I listened to the feedback that I got from the folks that I represent, as well as students and other community members in regards to what needed to be changed within the code of conduct. We had several meetings, we brought community members in here, stakeholders, parents and students because it's important to get the student voice on this. And we made changes to the code of conduct. The changes that we made with the code of conduct were targeted changes where, as before, we had something like deliberate disruption, which is like going into a doctor's office, them giving you some medicine and saying, well, your diagnosis is you're sick. What we've done with this now is that we have a very targeted diagnosis, okay, this is a particular issue and here is the intervention that we're going to apply to be able to fix this behavior. So that's what we're trying to do. And we're also trying to intervene earlier so these issues don't become bigger problems later on. You know, one of the other things we're trying to deal with, improving classroom behavior is having, you know, more drawn-in form, teaching and care with our students. And that's through our Compassionate Schools project. We're also trying to, you know, understand that different cultures have different ways of expressing themselves. Marty Polio talks about this, that some cultures are very expressive and for some newer teachers coming in, they may not know how to take that. They may some, for some reason, feel threatened about that. But it's just, you know, a student being able to express themselves, they're being, you know, just very outgoing. But that being said, though, you know, regarding some of the, you know, what was mentioned earlier about the reporting issues, you know, that's something we also need to make sure that we stay on top of. And that's one of the reasons why I call for an external audit report of those reporting to make sure that we do have accurate numbers in reporting the way they should be reported.
Let's start, well, we'll just go move right on to charter schools. Do you support charter schools? Why or why not? And we will start with Mr. Sexton.
I support charter schools or any option that parents have if in fact charter schools are run by the district. And that is the case in Indiana. That is not the case in Kentucky because the legislators have not decided about charter schools. But it should be that a mayor or a school superintendent can open a charter school in this district if our superintendent proposes it to the board and they accept it. This gives another option to the parents, that we already have options for magnets and traditions and charters are not any different. There's an excellent charter school in Evansville, Indiana, that is run by the Evansville Public School System. It's called Signature High and it's the number one charter school in the nation.
Mr. Brady, charter schools?
I don't support charter schools. To me, you are publicly subsidizing private education. You're taking funds that normally goes to the public school system and you're transferring it to a private company, even if they say they're a nonprofit, that is not transparent and not locally accountable. You know, one of the things that you talk about, if you were to have a kid that goes to charter schools and they'll say, well, let's punch it to follow that kid, okay, fine. But the fixed costs don't follow that kid either. You know, so it's like keeping the lights on, the water, the utilities, the building maintenance. None of those costs also follow the child to a, you know, private, pretty much private charter school. I think it's important to understand that when we talk about, you know, we can get people to start charter schools, we'll be out, pretty much anyone in our hands. Pitbull is the musical artist who has a charter, a charter school advocate. Andre Agassi has a charter school. It seems like anybody who's famous can just start, decide that they just want to start teaching. That is not what we need in this district. That's not what we need in this state, it's really not what we need in this country. That's why NAACP is against opening more charter schools. And you have to ask yourself, if you're on the wrong side of NAACP, then you really need to rethink your position. Now, tying this back to an earlier question, you know, where we're talking about, you know, the endorsement that matters and I want to represent, you know, the constituents of District Seven, which I absolutely will and do. But we also have to understand that the Lurdes Fund is all about charter schools. And what that fund, what those handful of millions and multimillionaires want to do is be able to create a charter school system within the district and take advantage of that opportunity to be creative. And that is why it is driving that particular initiative. And, you know, you're going to find out here in a minute that there is a proponent for what is so-called public charter schools.
Mr. Hollenbeck, would you address charter schools?
I have a question for Ms. Brady. What evidence do you have that this so-called cabal of millionaires is designing a charter school? What evidence do you have to present to this group?
Well, this isn't a court of law and I think it's pretty apparent, the fact that you have, whenever you have charter schools that come into a district, what happens very often is that that, there's a lot of fraud and mismanagement of that money. So for example...
Just answer the question, just answer the question.
I'm answering the question.
But I ask, what's the evidence that you have? So what do you normally...
Okay, let's get back to the question and I want to make sure Mr. Hollenbeck can answer the question about whether you support charter schools.
Yeah, because it's obvious you have no evidence of that. So you should not aspire information to people if you have no evidence. You should not do that. Now, let's talk about charter schools. I support the position of JCPS in your legislating agenda back in February, I think, in the meeting. And that said, we are for a strong public school system. I do, however, think we should listen to the some three million students who are now in charter schools, the forty-three states that have a charter law, and very likely the state of Kentucky that may have a law coming at us. I think we can't just bury our head and say, oh, well, they're bad, 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 when we see that the tide is saying there's something out there. I think we need to be open to what's happening. And while I would say that I know that NAACP doesn't support charter schools, there are a lot of folks in the West End that I've talked to that are very, very anxious to see that their failing schools have an alternative. And frankly, if I was in one of those schools, I sure would be looking for some alternatives too. So contrary to what you said, I am not a rah-rah charter school person. And I'm certainly not one that would promote or even tolerate a for-profit charter school. Those are inadequate to me, no way. So openness, willingness to listen, willingness to hear what the other side says, I think is a good approach.
Let's go ahead and on that topic, if charters are approved, how would you ensure that the education reform horror stories that we hear in other districts would not happen here? And since, Mr. Sexton, let's start with you. She said you would be in favor of possible...
I understand, I said I would be in favor if the charter schools were part of the district, the Jefferson County Public School District, which the legislators, if in fact they vote in charter schools, will allow the city mayors or the district superintendents to have charter schools that are not for-profit private schools outside of the district, but in the district, you know. Those I would support. I think we need as many options as possible. We have a definite talent drain going on here in Jefferson County. I've been in the district a long time and we've always had about a hundred thousand students. But the private and parochial system keeps growing. The surrounding counties keep growing. There's something going on and it has to do with safety and it has to do with achievement. Now, whatever we can do to add to, and if charter schools help retain our parents, neighborhood schools help retain our parents and students, we need to do it. And we need to put more rigor into the classroom and allow the teachers to teach.
Mr. Hollenbeck, how do you prevent those education reform stories you hear? You know, for clarification, there has been horror stories in both the public, the public charter schools as well as the private ones. There's been successes and negatives for each, so just keep that in mind, it's not just towards the private or the public aspect.
Right, and to your point, you know, there are a myriad of examples of some pretty low-handed activities by so-called charter schools that are for-profit typically, that do all sorts of funny things with property and selling and show organizations. And that's why, as I mentioned, for-profit charter schools is not the way to go. It's just not. And that's where you see a lot of the abuses. Having said that, the opportunity that I saw with the board, and I commend Mr. Brady and the board for examining the WEP to... and the board for examining the W E B Du Bois Academy model that they've had a work session on about two months ago. And I would submit to you, that's pretty close to a charter school. There's nothing that prevents Jefferson County from having charter schools in their system. It just needs the money stays within the system. So looking at that opportunity, I think is a good way to think about how Jefferson County makes sure that there's not this drain that Mr. Saxton talked about, which is absolutely correct. Plus, the capacity for us to have more traditional schools, I think will draw in more parents who see that as an opportunity to have a setting which they feel more comfortable with.
What, you're opposed? I don't know if you want to address that.
Well, yeah, actually, I would because one of the things we keep hearing about is private or public charter schools versus private charter schools. And there's really almost no difference. What happens is you have a nonprofit charter school that will report or be somewhat owned by a for-profit entity. And what happens is the for-profit entity will come in, they'll buy pieces of land, they'll get it at a discounted rate because they're opening a school. They will either refurbish to the existing building or build a new building and then once the nonprofit charter goes in, they're going to charge that nonprofit charter two to three times the market rate back in. They'll do that for the property, they'll do it for the building, they'll do it for the chairs, the desks, the computers, pretty much all the materials that's in there. We see this over and over and over throughout the nation, again and again. And then what happens is that charter operators are very proud of the fact that they say that, well, because how we're going to close the school. So what it literally means in some cases is that your child shows up to the school on Friday, they'll leave school Friday afternoon, and then on Monday, the school's closed at a moment's notice. And then all those kids will then go back down to the public school system and they'll be unfunded because the charter kept that funding. And that, you see that over and over and over again. I, I just don't see the, us opening Pandora's box on that. And the other thing about the, how it would come into the district is that you, all you need to do is take a look at Nashville, where they had a charter school that wanted to build a, wanted to come into the school right across the street from the existing public school. The school board there denied that, that application. And that particular charter operator went around the school, they appealed to an appellate committee that approved the charter school and basically took local control out of the hands of the locally elected school board. This is what I would like and pray that we can avoid here in Jefferson County and Kentucky.
All right, we are coming to the end of the session. I would like each of you to take about a minute or ninety seconds to kind of briefly state to the voters of District Seven why you are the best candidate for JCPS District Seven in the school board here in Jefferson County. And let's go ahead and start with Mr. Hollenbeck.
Well, again, thank you for the opportunity, excuse me, to address this group. And I value the PTAs and I can assure you that when elected, I will be at your PTA meetings. I'll be in those committee meetings. That's the best way for a board member to hear what's happening. And while it's good to have committee conversations, which Mr. Brady's going to have tomorrow, I think it often is easier for parents to talk to you in the setting of their choosing. So when they go to a PTA meeting and they see you, they're more likely to say, hey, you know what's going on with this or that? So again, and I've had a chance to speak to a number of PTAs and it's been wonderful. So a teacher, assistant principal, business leader, experience with what I would say is a very, very complex financial document. Not enough focus is put on the financial acumen that's needed to understand where one point four million, billion dollars is going. And while there's some things that we have to fund, there is a lot of, a lot of money in here that we can allocate towards better use in the classrooms and with teachers. Secondly, if you believe like I do that reading is fundamental, we need to address the issue of fifty percent of our third graders not reading at level after the third grade year. That's why on my website I talk about the literacy guarantee. We need to stop this idea that we can promote kids to learn high school and say, oh, here's your diploma. Oh, but by the way, you're only reading at about a sixth or seventh grade level. It might be tough for you to be competitive in the world of work. So I welcome the opportunity to take any questions afterwards. I've enjoyed the opportunity to share my thoughts with my colleagues and I look forward to your support. Thank you very much.
Mr. Brady.
Thank you. And once again, thank you to the PTA for allowing us to have this opportunity to talk to the voters. You know, as a parent and an educator that has taught in our public schools as well as in the private sector and also at the university level, I feel that I have been able to bring a very unique point of view and some interesting ideas and insights to the board. During my time on the board, I've been able to accomplish, I feel, a great many things. We have now have a three-one-three help system, so a single point of contact, contact, if you have a problem or a concern with the district, call three-one-three help. We just started that this year and we would love to be able to help you in the best way possible. You know, I kind of got the ball rolling on our Camp Edwards Early Childhood Education Center. Not in the district, but it does fill a critical need for those children that are in an area that's underserved and also to be able to expand our early childhood services. I was able to get the district to revamp its website to be able to find, for parents to be able to find information easier. I also called for the state audit, which was a catalyst for change within the district and was able to give us a roadmap to be able to reallocate funds and apply those where they were best, where they were best useful. I also was instrumental in creating the transparency website. I called for that. And this is a way for you, the public, to be able to see how we actually spend our money within the district. And as well as coming up with a facilities and infrastructure improvement plan, which is really, really critical, we're going to go forward within our district. You know, I'm very proud to be the representative of District Seven and I do want to commend my fellow candidates up here for the opportunity to be able to talk with you today. I'm actually surprised there's only four people in the race because we have such great schools. I'm, you know, I would imagine that almost anybody would want to represent this district. So once again, I want to thank you all for the opportunity and I would hope to earn your vote.
Mr. Saxton.
Thank you. Thanks to the PTSD. You may remember that was Principal of the Year, Ross. Okay. I served in two very high schools that served District Seven, Jefferson Town and Eastern. I have sixteen thousand graduates. They'll vote.
Okay. Is that, okay? If you want to add any more, just one quick, one last question for each of you. You're all educators. What letter grades would you give Jefferson County Public Schools right now? Mr. Saxton.
C-plus.
Mr. Hollenbeck.
To be determined.
Mr. Brady.
I was asked this question four years ago when I ran and I base it off our graduation rate. And I would, and we're at eighty percent, I would give us a B. When we're at sixty-eight percent, there was a time that I gave us a B.
Eighty was a C.
So now we're, no, eighty percent is a B. We, we have a new scale. We changed the scales so it's better. Which, by the way, that scales, now levels playing field and allows our kids to be able to compete for scholarship funds with any other kid within the state. The majority of counties around Jefferson County are on a ten-point scale. This is the same ten-point scale that they use in colleges. So, and if you're going to say that somehow Odom County is, isn't really as comparable to Jefferson County, they use the same ten-point scale as does Shelby, Enstensive, and Boyd and number in the vast majority of districts within the state of Kentucky.
Thank you to the three of you for coming and taking the time out tonight. And if you have additional questions or problems in the audience, they will be available afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you.